And I was amazed to discover that forty years of study successful, five stores in Maine, is now eleven stores. And almost in one year, it's changed. And then I discovered that all across the nation, this is changing. Cooperatives are really happening. So what's that about? Perhaps you know about the worker co-op in Peoria, Maine. It's the biggest one in Maine now, four stores. These are just sort of average people. They're interested in saving their jobs. So my point is that the people want control. They want local. They want organic. They want wealth back in their community. They do not want corporate food. Cooperatives have always been a grassroots phenomenon, and I think that's my main object. It's very grassroots. So every co-op was created to serve an important feed that was not meant from the marketplace. And we're talking two hundred years here. So ninety-seven percent of Mainers want label. I cannot understand why the legislators will not give this to them. And I don't want to sound threatening, but I really feel part of the reason I'm speaking here is that the people will eventually take the power and make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Next.
I am going to call Ellis Addington for... You caught me by surprise.
Thank you.
As Cassie's passing out, both of my testimonies, excuse me. Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, my name is Ellis Addington. I'm the Bureau Director for the Bureau of Agriculture, Food and Rural Resources, for the Department of Agriculture. I promise this is the last time you'll see me today. I testify on both bills. I did write two separate testimonies, 991, I'll cover first. And basically, the department opposes this bill. And if you boil down, my testimony is basically because it overrides the trigger. And we feel that the trigger was there for a reason. And that it's still, that reason is still germane. And that we do not see a reason at this point to override that trigger. 1326, which you also should have in front of you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shorten it up. There's a paragraph just below my typical introduction that, that kind of defines what the bill talks about. And our, our concern with this bill, over and above the fact that it doesn't wear the trigger, that's our biggest concern. But it also is very far-reaching and does bring in a lot of things that were exempted from the original bill that was signed into law. So I'm gonna skip that paragraph because it just basically says, here's all the new things that it does. And I'll start with, in addition, Maine already having a GMO labeling law on the books, making this legislature appeal unnecessary. Our main concerns in opposing this bill are, number one, there is no scientific reason to label GMO or GE products. They are recognized as safe and pose no risk to consumers. Unintended consequences of the bill, it's far-reaching in design and may have some unintended consequences, such as increased cost to Maine consumers. Constitutional violations. We believe the interstate commerce clause may come into play when imposing requirements on the wide range of goods in commerce. Since this law applies to retail food, we hope the committee will explore this issue to ensure we have access to the full range of foods currently in commerce. We believe the First Amendment may also come into play. This issue would be best addressed at a national or international level. That's been said before. I don't say anymore. Impact on local and small agriculture. This bill would impose new requirements on our agricultural and food processes and producers. The department works every day to remove known food hazards. And this, these new requirements impose additional costs and regulatory controls that will be difficult to absorb. And I think my time is up, so you've got the rest. But you've heard pretty much everything from other people. I'll turn.
Could you do me a favor, Sean? Since the beginning of this session, my last, my last name is not spelled correctly. Could you tell them this is the correct way?
You'd better tell me, because I write my own testimony, so I will do that.
Can you say the difference?
I can, and I apologize.
All right. Thank you.
And I think somebody did correct me once, and then I went back to the same format again. And that's a little embarrassing.
That's all right. I let it go for a while. I thought maybe...
I would smile now, but I didn't. Thank you. John Olson.
Thank you. Thank you. Greg, I don't believe I've ever read your name tag, so I can't read your writing. Is it Dugard or Dugav?
Dugav, either one. My mother would love it if you said Dugav.
I would say Greg Dugav.
That's the way they pronounce it, is Dugav.
My mom says it's Ga. I couldn't have seen a Ga.
some of the reason why you couldn't get my last name. And members of the Joint Standing Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, Forestry, and the Greg Dugav, here today representing the Maine Restaurant Association, testifying in opposition, opposition to strictly LD 1326. Restaurants are fundamentally different from processed food companies or grocery stores. As end users of products, restaurants are typically, you hold them to their supply chain with regard to their products, ingredients, and content. In addition, many items that are made by hand and customized onsite naturally lack the consistency of products from food manufacturers. Given the incredible diversity of restaurants and array of culinary items they serve, application to restaurants would be very confusing to consumers and difficult to administer for the restaurant operator. Legislation that includes restaurants will create artificial winners and losers with regard to what the law does and does not apply. The majority of all soy and corn crops, as we've heard, are genetically modified in the United States. Many restaurant menu items contain one of these ingredients. The impact of labeling would be magnified. It would be difficult and costly for restaurants to track and label ingredients as menu items change. As far as I can tell, no state is currently requiring restaurants to comply with GMO statute based on the difficulty of identifying their presence based on current information. It'd also be difficult for food service distributors with a standalone, single-state version of the law, especially in a small market like Maine. The Maine restaurant industry would find it difficult to obtain many products based on the choices that would have to be made by our distribution network and their suppliers. Continued exemption for all products sold in all types of restaurants is necessary to avoid inconsistencies and confusion. With those reasons, we urge the committee to vote LD 1326 out, or not pass. I'm glad to answer any questions. Anyone want to add?
House Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does the Restaurant Association take any position on LD 991?
It has not. And frankly, I didn't ask for one, but we spoke, in the last time we spoke, neither for one or against LD 718 as long as restaurants weren't included.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Shall we go?
Before I begin, I just wanted to know that I, I just wanted you to know that I'm also providing written testimony from the Maine Beverage Association. They are speaking in opposition to all food bills, and I asked me to hand in a testimony. So I'm just being a purveyor of your testimony. Do you have to meet again? Good evening. Shelley Goke, Executive Director of the Maine Grocers and Fruit Producers Association. I am here speaking in opposition to LD 991 and LD 1326. We believe that health and safety issues regarding food and food labeling are best legislated at a national level. However, our opposition to each of these proposals is because they undermine the thoughtful deliberate compromise reached by Maine's interested parties in the passage of public law 436, creating a framework for the labeling of genetically engineered foods near Maine. LD 991 would repeal the effective date, reversing a critical element of the compromise that ensured passage of Maine's law. LD 1326 would drastically alter Maine's law, making it the most prohibitive law in the nation, surpassing similar laws impacted, enacted in Connecticut and Vermont. We are in strong opposition to each of these proposals, and we urge you to vote against any modifications to Maine's genetically engineered product law. On average, Maine grocery stores and supermarkets offer 45,000 food items for sale. While a growing number of food products are grown and processed here in Maine, ninety percent of our food is imported. Make no mistake, if Maine's laws were to go into effect in isolation, we will be vulnerable to the decisions of our out-of-state companies who would be forced to label their products only for Maine. It's likely, highly, excuse me, it's highly probable that they will bypass our staying or pass the compliance burden onto our distributors and grocers. A state-mandated labeling law adopted in isolation would be particularly devastating to the credibility of Maine food and beverage producers, who competitors would not be held to the same requirements. There is no question that they will lose market share here in Maine at a cross-state law. Costs to implement and maintain the requirements would be passed along to Maine citizens, who should anticipate their grocery store, grocery bills will increase. Taking money out of the pockets of Maine consumers by increasing their grocery bills is bad policy. We firmly stand by the negotiated compromise, believing this thus for Maine's food and food community and the people that eat. Please support Maine's food community and vote in opposition to both LD 991 and LD 1326. Thank you for this opportunity to testify and happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, thank you, Chairman.
Autumn Brook, held by R.L. Ronson. Whitney Marshall. Dr. Perstola. Skerry. Also on here.
Thank you again for the time. Listening to the testimonies that pose certain issues.
Did you say your name also?
Autumn Brook, though, in Maine. And I'm concerned with the issues of where, what our problems will be. If we're, you know, we're going to go bankrupt in a court trying to, you know, just buy our safeties to make sure that our foods aren't going to harm us, or that at least we have an idea to choose what foods are, we, in our personal opinions, have a choice to choose because it's labeled. And in the oppositions that I'm hearing, I would think the best thing for Maine to do is get an infrastructure, start building a lot of greenhouses, because the world wants we're down at food. It is, it is in high demand right now, and people want it. And as your constituents, we're, we're digging gardens because we're afraid to buy food. So in, in a way of economically saying, anyone that feels a threat to act in a way, in a positive way, to make their health better, or, you know, they have to get some type of federal way of not violating things, I mean, I know we have a constitution and stuff, and I'm not as well-informed as all of you right now in the way bills become, that we know, and all the policies and things. However, as a human being, when we're afraid and we're questioning our food, whether it's genetic, or it's a synthetic chemical, or it's something, you know, that, because it's combined now, it's even toxic, but it's not known to be of itself, these are actually the things we're talking about. And it involves genetics that can be instituted, breaking an envelope of a species and changing it from any route it chooses to go in a genetic sequence. It's not designed just because in the lab they think that. Because when that species is opened as an independent living system, there is no way science can predict where that created synthetic thing is, or that chemical, or that toxin is actually hitting. And as far as these twenty years of being, you know, we've been eating them, and they're proven safe, look in our health. America has the most expensive healthcare system in the sickest society in the world. And every other nation agrees that it is because of what is allowed in our foods. And other countries are almost backlashing at us, calling us dumb Americans, because they have banned a chemical that now the date, you know, the WHO announcement. But the things that as well ask, because I want to speak on, you know, the principles of two different 991 and 1326, would have changed of all things. And I would feel that I, you know, I support both of them. I support every one of these bills today, and it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Susan, thank you.
R.L. Ronson. Whitby Marshall. Dr. Perstola. Skerry. Welcome, Dr.
I didn't really plan to, I, first of all, Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and members of the meeting here. I'm a little nervous. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I didn't really plan to speak today. I didn't really plan to come, but I said, I've got to be here. I'm a major path doctor practicing in Portland, in South Portland, for over twenty years now. I'm also a member of MAFKA and this wonderful community of people called the elders for future generation. We've entered the age of chronic disease. Diabetes, Alzheimer's, cancer, heart disease, artery disease, all of these are epidemic. We know that. And it's growing worse. These diseases don't happen overnight. It takes ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years before they develop and get symptoms of them. Our sciences have gone beyond the study of genetics, which is the study of our genes. Our genes are not our destiny. They're merely our blueprints. They're the blueprints that our immune system and our other communicating networks in our body follow to keep us alive and thinking. But we're now in the age of epigenetics, the study of how lifestyle choices, and specifically our environment, can alter our own genetic blueprints, not only ours, but those of future generations. We're beginning to see, thanks to the advances in the technology and their use in the studies of microbiology, neurobiology, and all the other ologies, the epigenetic effects on our bodies and our health. You know, as a major path doctor, I return to the words of the father of medicine Hippocrates. He must have known something way back then when he said, "Food is medicine." And the original word of meaning of the word doctor is to teach. And I have that responsibility, and I take that responsibility. The majority of my patients are coming in dealing with all those chronic, all the consequences of those chronic diseases I mentioned above. In the light of what we know about epigenetics, I encourage all my patients to read and pay attention to labels. I ask them to look for the additives and the processes that our food undergo, such as genetic modification of foods like corn, and its derivative, high fructose corn syrup and soy. Ask them to pay attention to labels, and potentially to the, all the allergenic carcinogenic additives and processes that are modulating our immune system. The safety of corporate food is in question. My patients and our, and all of us on this planet have a right to know what's in our food and how our food is grown. And we count on all of you, our legislators, to secure that right for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perstola.
Thank you, Becky.
Representative Marion has a question for you. Thank you, Doctor. Thank you for coming. What was your last name again?
Skerry. S-K-E-R-R-Y. It's not as scary as it sounds.
I spelled it differently. Thank you. Thank you for that. Sister from China still, hello. Elizabeth Chargo.
Practice.
Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and members of the committee. My name is Elizabeth Chargo, and I live in Auburn. And I didn't actually prepare testimony today, but I am here to speak out in support of LD 1326. And I'm not going to talk about food. We all have a choice when we go to the grocery store about what food we buy. But my concern is more importantly than the addition of the other genetically-modified products in this bill. And I'm specifically going to talk about medicines. There are vaccinations on the market right now that contain GMO technology. They came out, one was released in 2013, another was released in 2014. And these are vaccinations that are mandated in our state law, that are being injected into the bodies of our children. And there is other legislation in the works right now, right here in Maine, that would remove or reduce our right to exempt our children and ourselves, quote, in an employment situation and educational position, from these vaccines. So basically, we are faced, as parents and as medical consumers, with forcing completely liability-free pharmaceutical products that contain GMO technology into our bodies and into the bodies of our children. Adding the addition of GMO products and GMO medicines to this bill would go a long way in really just starting to protect our children from these. We don't know the implications of what this technology is going to do. Maybe we've been eating GMO foods for twenty years. We certainly haven't been injecting radical GMO technology into our children for any amount of time. And I'm really concerned about the long-term implications of this. So I'm going to ask you to respectfully support LD 1326, and also, more importantly, you have the power of the vote to protect the informed consent principle that, to me, is a basic right as we go forward in other legislation, not just with genetic modified technology, but with all of the health choices that we have to make for our children. It starts with our food and our medication. But, you know, if the state's going to mandate that we inject these things into our children, we at least have the right to know what's in them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Is Joey Rinzell still here? Is Lorie Looker here? Joy Beckhans, she's still here. Joy, too. Paul Cunningham, she's still here. Louisa Hart? Suzanne Ludner?
Senator Edgcombe and Representative Hickman, I'm Susan Ludner from Bath, and all of the members. I'm here to support LD 991. One of the senators who spoke earlier had said, I think it's, who had worked on the precursor to that one, LD 991, had said he thought it was a rash. Don't be rash. And I really find it hard to think that ninety-seven percent of the people in Maine wanting food labeled GMOs is a rash decision. I think it's a pretty strong decision. And I understand there is roadblocks to overcome, and that can possibly, that can be worked out in the midst of this. And saying things like Maine's, don't go it alone, but we're, Vermont has passed such a law, Connecticut has, he also said twenty votes in New Hampshire, only the law would have passed in New Hampshire. States around the country. I think we need to be courageous and know that it's a trend. I guess if you took a survey of everybody in the country, I bet you the rates of people wanting GMO labels would be quite, quite way up there. I think also, we need to think in terms of long-term, not always just short-term. Long-term, and healthy food, make healthy people, healthy children, less medical costs, less educational issues, special...
Listening to the testimony is that it poses certain issues.
Did you say your name also?
I'm sorry. Autumn Brook, though, of Maine. And I'm concerned with the issues of where... What our problems will be. If we're, you know, we're going to go bankrupt in a court trying to, you know, just buy our safeties to make sure that our foods aren't going to harm us, or that at least we have an idea to choose what foods are... We, in our personal opinions, have a choice to choose because it's labeled. And in the oppositions that I'm hearing, I would think the best thing for Maine to do is get an infrastructure, start building a lot of greenhouses, because the world wants we're down at food. It is... It is in high demand right now, and people want it. And as your constituents, we're digging gardens because we're afraid to buy food. So in a way of economically saying, anyone that feels a threat to act in a way, in a positive way, to make their health better, or, you know, they have to get some type of federal way of not violating things... I mean, I know we have a constitution and stuff, and I'm not as well-informed as all of you right now in the way bills become, you know, and all the policies and things. However, as a human being, when we're afraid and we're questioning our food, whether it's genetic, or it's a synthetic chemical, or it's something, you know, that because it's combined now, it's even toxic, but it's not known to be of itself, these are actually the things we're talking about. And it involves genetics that can be instituted, breaking an envelope of a species and changing it from any route it chooses to go in a genetic sequence. It's not designed just because in the lab they think that. Because when that species is opened as an independent living system, there is no way science can predict where that created synthetic thing is, or that chemical, or that toxin is actually hidden. And as far as these twenty years of being, you know, we've been eating them and they're proven safe, look in our health. America has the most expensive healthcare system in the sickest society in the world. And every other nation agrees that it is because of what is allowed in our foods. And other countries are almost backlashing at us, calling us dumb Americans, because they have banned a capital, that now the date, you know, the WHO announcement. But the things that, as well as, because I want to speak on, you know, the principles of two different 991 and 1326, which have changed of all things. And I would feel that I, you know, I support both of them. I support every one of these bills today, and it should be done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Questions? See none. Thank you.
Ariel Ronson. Going once. Whitney Marshall. Dr. Priscilla Scarry.
Welcome, Dr. Thank you.
I didn't really plan to... I'm, first of all, Senator Edgcombe and Representative Hickman and members of the committee. The meeting here, a little nervous. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I didn't really plan to speak today. I didn't even plan to come, but I've got to be here. I'm a naturopathic doctor practicing in Portland, in South Portland, for over twenty years now. I'm also a member of MAFKA and this wonderful team of people called the Elders for Future Generation. We've entered the age of chronic disease. Diabetes, Alzheimer's, cancer, heart disease, heart disease, all of these are epidemic. We know that. And it's growing worse. These diseases don't happen overnight. It takes ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years before they develop and get symptoms of them. Our sciences have gone beyond the study of genetics, which is the study of genes. Our genes are not our destiny. They're merely our blueprints. They're the blueprints that our immune system and our other communicating networks in our body follow to keep us alive and thinking. But we're now in the age of epigenetics, the study of how lifestyle choices, and specifically our environment, can alter our own genetic blueprints, not only ours, but those of future generations. We're beginning to see, thanks to the advances in the technology and their use in the studies of microbiology, neurobiology, and all the other ologies, the epigenetic effects on our bodies and our health. You know, as a naturopathic doctor, I return to the words of the father of medicine Hippocrates. He must have known something way back then when he said, "Food is medicine." And the original word of meaning of the word "doctor" is to teach. And I have that responsibility, and I take that responsibility. The majority of my patients are coming in dealing with all those chronic, all the consequences of those chronic diseases I mentioned about. In the light of what we know about epigenetics, I encourage all my patients to read and pay attention to labels. I ask them to look for the additives and the processes that our food undergo, such as genetic modification of foods like corn and its derivative, high fructose corn syrup and soy. I ask them to pay attention to labels and potentially to the all the allergenic carcinogenic additives and processes that are modulating our immune system. The safety of corporate food is in question. My patients and our... And all of us on this planet have a right to know what's in our food and how our food is grown. And we count on all of you, our legislators, to secure that right for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Priscilla. Thank you, Dex. Representative Maria has questions for you.
Thank you, Doc, for coming. What was your last name again?
Scarry. S-K-E-R-Y, R-A-W-A. It's not as scary as it sounds.
I spelled it differently.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. Burke, sister from China still alive. Elizabeth Shargo.
You know, it's not right.
Practice.
Hi. Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and members of the committee. My name is Elizabeth Shargo, and I live in Auburn. And I didn't actually prepare testimony today, but I am here to speak out in support of LD 1326. And I'm not going to talk about food. We all have a choice when we go to the grocery store about what food we buy. But my concern is more importantly than the addition of the other genetically modified products in this bill, and I'm specifically going to talk about medicines. There are vaccinations on the market right now that contain GMO technology. They came out... One was released in 2013, another was released in 2014. And these are vaccinations that are mandated in our state law. They're being injected into the bodies of our children. And there is other legislation in the works right now, right here in Maine, that would remove or reduce our right to exempt our children and ourselves, quote, in an employment situation and an educational position from these vaccines. So basically, we are faced, as parents and as medical consumers, with forcing completely liability-free pharmaceutical products that contain GMO technology into our bodies and into the bodies of our children. Adding the addition of GMO products and GMO medicines to this bill would go a long way in really just starting to protect our children from these. We don't know the implications of what this technology is going to do. Maybe we've been eating GMO foods for twenty years. We certainly haven't been injecting radical GMO technology into our children for any amount of time. And I'm really concerned about the long-term implications of those. So I'm going to ask you to respectfully support LD 1326, and also, more importantly, you have the power to vote to protect the informed consent principle that, to me, is a basic right as we go forward in other legislation, not just with genetically modified technology, but with all of the health choices that we have to make for our children. It starts with our food and our medication. But, you know, if the state's going to mandate that we inject these things into our children, we at least have the right to know what's in them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Is Joy Metta still here? Is Lori Looker here? Joy Metta, she's still here? Joy, too. Paul Cunningham, is he still here? Louisa Hart? Suzanne Ludner?
Senator Edgcombe and Representative Hickman, I'm Susan Ludner from Bath and all committee members. I'm here to support LD 991. One of the senators who spoke earlier had said, I think it's who had worked on the precursor to that one, LD 991, had said he thought it was a rash. Don't be rash. And I really find it hard to think that ninety-seven percent of the people in Maine wanting food labeled GMOs labeled is a rash decision. I think it's a pretty strong decision. And I understand there is roadblocks to overcome, and that can possibly... That can be worked out in the midst of this. And saying things like Maine's, don't go it alone, but where Vermont has passed such a law, Connecticut has, he also said twenty votes in New Hampshire, only the law would have passed in New Hampshire, states around the country. I think we need to be courageous and know that it's a trend. I guess if you took a survey of everybody in the country, I bet you the rates of people wanting GMO labels would be quite, quite way up there. I think also, we need to think in terms of long-term, not always just short-term. Long-term and healthy food, make healthy people, healthy children, less medical costs, less educational issues, special health needs. Way back when Monsanto, they had a group of scientists who said, "Well, GMO foods, they're definitely not the same as regular foods." But that was totally ignored by Monsanto. And to say that these foods are safe, I mean, there's scientists all over the world that are really questioning how safe in the long-term foods are. You may not keel over that moment, but you're definitely... It has effects. And I think it would be a process to implement this. It probably couldn't... Clearly couldn't happen overnight, but I think I really invite you to vote in favor and pass it on to the people and pass it on to the legislature and the people. And I think there'd probably be enough votes in the whole House and Senate overall to do that. So I ask you to support. I'm speaking just for 991. I don't know... I don't totally understand what 991 is.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. I don't see any more people on the list in the room. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak?
Mr. Hobbs.
I would, thank you.
President Rashid Al-Wayy. I didn't think I had yet spoken on 1326. I had spoken on 991. That's what I spoke on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and ladies and gentlemen of the committee. My name is Tim Hobbs. I'm the Director of Development and Growth Relations for the Maine State Board, speaking here today in opposition to both LD 991 and LD 1326. Biggest reason that we're in opposition to this is because we were part of the compromise back in the 126 that resulted in a trigger mechanism in LD 718. And LD 991 intends to undo that, apparently because somebody was not satisfied with that result. We put our own effort and trust in process, and it was quite disappointing to see that after sixteen months, the process is trying to be thrown out the window, and say completely even trying to implement what was defeated last time. With an overwhelming support of 141 votes in the House, 35 votes in the Senate, that was only achieved, as you heard earlier, because of the fact that those triggers were in place. That's the reason for our opposition on that one, and as well as 1326, because we currently have GMO law in place, we would be opposed to 1326. One thing I would like to point out, and we've heard a lot of talk about the dangers of GMO and how harmful it is and how terrible it is, and, you know, if you do research, you can find evidence to support both sides of that coin. And so what do we do? Back in, I think it was 2000 and... In the spring of 2001, during the first session of the 120th, Maine became one of the first states, if not the first state, to identify items with no genetically engineered ingredients at farm stands and on store shelves. LD 1733 passed and became law. It permitted the use of a label on any food, food product, or food ingredient to indicate the product is free to have or made without genetic engineering. The bill directed the Department of Agriculture to develop rules. Well, here we are fourteen years later, no rules, no push, no outcry from the same people that you've heard about all the dangers, and we need to make GMO folks label their products. But there's been fourteen years of inactivity on promoting their products as GMO-free. Makes me wonder why. If somebody could help answer that question for me sometime, that would be appreciated. But the fact that we've had opportunity for folks to say, "My product doesn't contain GMO, ninety-seven percent of the people want a label," well, there's a label opportunity. Volunteer me, and nobody's taken a major.
Representative Hickman has a question. Thank you. This is a question for you specifically, but really as an informational question for people who may be in the room or listening. Are you aware that no legislature is bound by the actions of previous legislature?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to...
And I don't think that's a relevant... I mean, I was so aware of that for that reason.
There's a lot of... My testimony in opposition to this bill is that what we did last session was damned because it was so well thoroughly vetted and negotiated and compromised. But that was last legislature.
Well, let me tell you, I've been here for fourteen years now, and my ability to trust people to make compromises in the future is going to be severely hindered based upon the results of activities like this. To honestly go forward and bargain and negotiate in good faith that agreement or compromise that we've arrived at is going to be honored in the future, that's the issue that we have. We were also very transparent about the fact that we would come back in the next legislature and try to revoke the trigger. Not in our discussion. That was the first time I heard about that, was the... Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? That's all.
No, we're right here, Mr. Chairman. Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and the rest of the committee. You've seen me around here a lot. I like to sit here and listen to what's going on. At the age of five, I was diagnosed with diabetes, insulin-dependent. The insulin that they had come from pigs and cows. They had to die for me to live. And the doctor says, "My mother, five years, you're going to lose it." Then GMOs come into effect. Now, we've had people say twenty years. GMOs have been in effect a long time. Insulin is manufactured in a laboratory through GMO technology, and I'm still here today. So I wanted you to wake up. I know it's late, and I wanted to say my piece.